I am so happy today to have Bob Weinstein here. He is a Portland City Council candidate for District Four, is that right?
Correct.
Thanks for coming, Bob.
Well, thank you for having me.
Thank you for running. Nice to see you too.
I just, yeah, I want to shout out all the candidates that have come on and the future ones that are coming on because it's not easy to do this in person. A lot of people don't like even coming in person anymore, but I just appreciate your time.
Well, and I appreciate the opportunity. It gives me a way to communicate with the public, who I am and what my views are on the critical issues facing Portland.
Yeah. And Kristen, thanks for coming as always.
Thank you, Elliot. Love being here.
Yeah. I wanted to start with the PCF stuff. I hope I'm saying that right. Do you call it PCF? Portland Climate Energy Fund, I believe.
Portland Clean Energy.
Clean Energy Fund, sorry.
Community Benefits Fund, but yes, PCF.
Just because everyone's kind of been talking about that this week, there was a big story. I think you're looking at it right now.
Yeah, Oregonian February 24th.
I'm just curious, like your understanding of what that fund was originally intended for, because obviously the conversation now is like, let's use this money.
It's my understanding, including being reinforced by the article in the Oregonian, that the fund was intended to address, climate resiliency, climate change to some extent, but to provide funds to especially some nonprofits that serve marginalized communities, putting
AD.
heat pumps and or, you know,
Energy efficiency.
and energy efficiency in low income households. And that's fine, but there are some larger issues facing Portland in terms of clean energy and environment. But getting back to the article, the concern that I have is twofold. The fund is generating seven times the $30 million that the proponents and apparently city staff estimated at the time the voters approved it. It was supposed to be 30 million a year. They're estimating over 200 million a year.
How did that happen? Is that, I mean, I'm guessing it's in there, but.
Yeah, 1.3 billion in the next five years with the B.
You know, it's a tax on business, which ultimately gets passed out to consumers, something that the proponents don't mention. If you got a tax business, somehow that's going to get
They're gonna up their prices, yeah.
Look at your receipts. I mean, if you shop around here locally, a lot of the time you'll see that on there.
So even before it came out in the last couple of days that the fund was bleeding surplus essentially, there had been a report several years ago, I think by the auditor, that the fund was mismanaged and grants were being given to people to whom, if one hadn't looked at their history, a grant would not have been made. But what concerns me also, according to the Oregonian yesterday, the fact that there were hundreds of millions in anticipated surplus was kept hidden by Carmen Rubio. Apparently the mayor knew, some bureau heads knew, but the public didn't know. And I think if we're going to have transparent government, the public needs to know what's going on.
Especially when it's their money, right?
The public and the taxpayers absolutely have to know what's going on with their money. So that was sort of shocking to me as a longtime public official in Alaska, that what appears to be a deliberate effort, perhaps just an omission, if you want to say it's that, was made to hide the money so that a plan could be rolled out during the political season.
Yeah. And that's what I'm wondering, like, is it in there, Kristen? Or like, how did they? I'm just wondering, what was it? There were so many businesses that they were charging, which I don't think would be the case. Or were they overpaying? Or like, how did they get this crazy overestimate or?
Go ahead, Bob.
Okay, my understanding is that businesses were doing fairly well. So, you know, it's a percent tax, I think, on large companies. So the more money that the companies made, or the more revenues, I should say, that they had, the more PCF tax money ensued.
Yeah, it's 1%. 1% tax on in-person and online sales transactions with large retailers.
Which I thought I remember, don't they define that as like revenue based or?
Yeah, it's revenue based and I want to say it's.
I think the Walmarts and Amazon and other companies.
Okay. In like, you know, Renee Gonzalez suggested using this for public safety. I'm curious, like, what uses would you see for that?
Well, let me, let me talk about that. You know, Renee Gonzalez is in charge of the fire department, the commissioner in charge of the fire department, which includes fire and Portland Street Response, which is the non-armed response to behavioral issues that are not violent. So the fire department is about $11 million short to meet its budget goals for the coming fiscal year. Renee, in his budget recommendation to try to fill that gap, recommended that Portland Street Response's budget be decreased by $3 million. Carmen Rubio, who's in charge of the PCEF, this huge fund with hundreds of millions more than they expected, the fund has, you know, the excesses invested, there's interest. So there was anticipated to be 12 million in interest, not the principal, but interest from that fund. She offers 3 million of it to cover the PC or the Portland Street Response budget cut, the recommended budget cuts. Renee Gonzalez responds by saying, that's a great concept. Give me the 12 million so we are whole. I issued a statement right away supporting that because number one, it's not touching the principal. So the goals of clean energy fund remains whole and we can address a serious public safety issue in our community. So I looked at it as a win-win situation.
Yeah. Yeah, it is interesting. I was wondering, because I heard of people saying like, it's written into the program or the law or something that, would they have to change the rules around that fund to spend that? Or is it?
My understanding is the council could vote without any question to spend the interest.
Gotcha.
I'm not sure what would have to take place for the principle of it, whether the council could change that or whether the council could ask the voters, hey, this fund is generating hundreds of millions more in a five-year period than we anticipated. We think we have some basic services that are underfunded. And again, I would say police, fire, transportation apparently has a deficit.
Yeah, I know a lot of bureaus, yeah, have deficits and facing challenges, yeah. Yeah, that's a good, I'm glad you answered that though, because that was just something I was wondering of like, so the interest is kind of available, but the principal is.
Well, the interest is sitting there and I'm not sure what mechanism allows it to move over to public safety. But my understanding is the council could vote to do that.
Okay, cool. I'm going to jump around here because you mentioned bureaus, but I had this weird question on here, which maybe you won't be able to answer. I don't know. But I was thinking, you know, I know you're on the charter stuff and I'm going to ask about that too. But assuming we didn't have this new form of city council coming up, if you could pick a bureau to be in charge of, would you, was there one you'd like to run or oversee?
You know, let me put that in context of my experience and what I think I'm qualified for. That would rule out the police department. That would rule out the fire department. You know, transportation, maybe, although I don't have a transportation background, but certainly when I was with the city, we did a lot of public works kinds of things.
I don't know that you need that background though, right? Like Renee was never a firefighter.
Yeah, well, they kind of get assigned, don't they?
Yeah.
But maybe civic life, you know, civic life, at least part of civic life deals with neighborhoods and people in the neighborhoods. You know, if I had to pick one, that might be one I'd pick because then I could work to improve our neighborhood associations or coalitions and have much better communications between the neighborhoods and city government.
Yeah. I just, I don't know. I know it's a weird question because like they're doing away with that, but I just thought that'd be funny.
Yeah, I hadn't thought of that. So that's a, that's a great question. Yeah.
So yeah, I want to get into this charter, why you're running, but also I'm curious now, tell me about your Alaska stuff. I didn't even know about that.
Okay. Well, let me give you a little bit of my background. I grew up in Massachusetts, went to the University of Massachusetts, got a degree in psychology, came out to the University of Oregon and I got a master's in special education. And after I finished that in 1974, I was offered a job in Southeast Alaska, sort of being a flying special ed teacher quasi administrator throughout all of Southeast Alaska.
Because I know like small plane travel is common there.
It was all float plane travel.
Yeah. And is this, what's South, is that Juneau or something or?
Well, it's Juneau to Ketchikan. It's the archipelago that goes down the BC coast.
Gotcha.
So it's not attached to the, what you would think of the main part of Alaska. So ultimately there were some administrative changes and our school district became, instead of covering all of Southeast, outside of the cities, we covered the southern half of Southeast Alaska outside the cities. A lot of logging camps, fishing villages, a small native village. So we had about 600 kids in a 20,000 square mile area.
Wow.
So it was a, you know, basically the size of New England and that was the size of our school district. And we had ultimately our own aircraft and pilot. And that's how administrative personnel traveled to the schools. We had music teachers, special ed teachers, a librarian, et cetera. So I did that. And then in 1991, I ran for the Ketchikan City Council.
Okay.
My platform was budget reform. And there's a long story that I won't share right now as to why that was the case, but I was elected, re-elected. And then in 1997, the mayor at the time was term limited. They had term limits that ended actually at some point. So I ran against two other council members for mayor. I won in a landslide of 45 votes.
Wow. It was a blowout.
It was a real blowout. But anyway, I was elected three more times. I served 12 years as mayor.
That's a long time for any mayor.
It's the longest in Ketchikan history. And I had opponents sometimes once I ran unopposed.
What were their term limits there? Or how long is a term there?
A term is three years. And as I said, there were term limits. And at one point, a council member wanted to remove those. And I agreed to ask the public, it could not affect, he was, his seat would have been up in the next election. I said, well, we can't have a vote in the same election that you are going to run in.
Kind of a conflict of interest.
Well, it would be a mess. I mean, can you run, but you don't know if the voters are going to remove term limits? So that wasn't an issue for him. He said, fine, it can't apply to any current council member, only future elections. Well, the voters overwhelmingly removed term limits, which was interesting.
Yeah, that is interesting. I would, I feel like most people are the opposite kind of opinion, but I don't know.
In fact, one year, one year, a former school board member wanted to run against me. And he started circulating a petition to reinstate term limits because as he told me, he didn't think he could beat me head on. And when people found out that that was his reason, he just wanted to not allow me to be a candidate. They didn't sign it. It didn't go anywhere. But anyway, after, towards the end of my fourth term, the Anchorage mayor, Mark Begich, was elected to the US Senate. I got offered a job in Southeast Alaska, in Ketchikan, representing a US senator. And a lot of my work was constituent work. So if somebody had an issue with social security, which covers a wide range of subjects, the IRS, the Forest Service, you name the department, I dealt with issues and it's one thing. He was very keen on making sure that constituents got responses and got, if they had a question, they got the information. And I, and I think that's important. And I think that, and we can talk about that later, translates into what's needed in Portland. There needs to be a much more robust response from council members to constituents.
Yeah, it's a good point, yeah.
Especially now that we're in districts.
Because I think a lot of people for the past several years felt like there's a lot of talk and conversation that comes out of City Hall, but it never translates to the communities necessarily.
Well, and if you send an email, you're probably going to get some bounce back form. I mean, especially if it goes to Wheeler. I have never heard from his staff ever. I find Mingus Maps and Dan Ryan to actually be the most, have the most responsive staffs. They usually get back, I mean, within days about some of the most contentious things.
Yeah, no, it's just, I think it's a cool, yeah, thing to bring to your campaign or your running, because I haven't heard anyone really mention that, so.
Yeah, that's a big deal.
I mean, it's, it's huge. And with the change to the new government, where despite qualifications or lack thereof, council members will not be in charge of the bureaus.
Right.
Part of the focus was supposed to be council be legislative only and policymaking. But a huge chunk of it was the council should be able to be more responsive to constituents because we'll have more time.
Right.
And I say, we, should I be elected to do that?
You're freed up from the bureau responsibilities.
Yeah, no management responsibilities, which I think is a good thing.
Yeah. So yeah, let's get into, because I've heard from a couple of people, you spent a lot of time on the charter reform thing, right?
Right. I became part of a group that opposed the package that the Charter Commission foisted on the public.
Partnership for Common Sense Government.
Partnership for Common Sense Government, Vadim Mazarsky, Mike Lindberg, longtime city council member, former mayoral staff for Bud Clark, Steve Moskowitz, Chuck Duffy, a number, a number of people. It's a long list, so I'll stop trying to name them.
While they were putting this reform thing together, you guys formed this group.
Correct.
Okay.
And what, we opposed it for a number of reasons. But before I say those reasons, we supported charter reform. We supported moving away from the commissioner system. We supported having a professional city administrator. We also supported having districts for council members, single member districts with a more standard form of voting.
Yeah.
What we did oppose are these multi-member districts with this form of voting called single transferable voting. It's a form of ranked choice voting. It's used essentially only in one of 19,500 jurisdictions in the United States. Cambridge, Massachusetts. It's been tried in some others. I think Arlington, Virginia tried it. The voters went back to a different form of voting after experiencing it.
In most other ranked choice cities or areas, they, it's, it's a, yeah, non-transferable vote.
Yeah, it's a straightforward ranked choice. You need 50% plus one to win. That's what the commission recommended for the mayor and the auditor. And if somebody doesn't have 50%, they eliminate the bottom candidates. Or candidate, if somebody gets 50% plus one, they win. Anyway, they keep that process going. Under this form of voting, we'll be able to rank six candidates. The Charter Commission had promised you could rank as many as you want. That changed since the implementation.
And that would be confusing.
And I think one thing that most people don't understand, and the Charter Commission went out of its way to make sure nobody understood it before the election, was that even though you'll have three representatives in your district, at most, you'll have one vote count for one of them. Not one vote count for three representatives in your district.
Yeah, I'm already confused.
Yeah, it's a very, but what, what it does, and I won't get into the math because I get confused. In fact, the Charter Commission itself got confused when they met with the Lamont Week editorial board. Lamont Week ended up opposing it because they got three different versions of how the votes would be tallied. And one of the Charter Commission members, who's actually running for city council now, under a system he helped devise, is famously quoted as saying, you don't have to know how the voting works. It's like an automobile engine. It just does.
That's not very reassuring, but you know.
So especially in this day and age where everyone I know is concerned about voting and voting integrity and making sure people understand that we have an honest, fair election, saying to the voters, gee, you don't have to know how we're going to count your votes.
Don't look behind the curtain.
It just gets counted, you know, rubs me the wrong way. So under that system, they, you only need 25% plus one to win. What they do, if anybody.
Bob, it might, is it possible to get less than 25% and win? Because I was told, based on single transferable vote, it is.
I'm told that possibly for the last seat, that could happen. And I can't, I can't explain why. I don't understand the math that well myself.
Yeah.
But what I do know is if a candidate has broad support, like if you guys ran and you got 60% and you got 20 and I got 10, they would take votes away from her. If she has 60%, they would take almost 35% of her votes away and distribute them to other candidates.
And that's the single transferable vote component.
And then when that's all done, you know, they do that, they see who gets 25% plus one. She already did. If taking hers away bumps you up, then that's what happens. Then, and only then after they take votes away from candidates, do they start eliminating candidates at the bottom. Until there's three candidates who've got 25% plus one, in theory.
So it has to kind of equal that and then they are happy or something, you know, it has to.
It's, it's, it's very complicated. And I think voters are going to be sort of surprised at how it works.
And so is part of why you're running to kind of get back to correcting that or?
Well, let me say, you know, I'm running because, you know, as a former school superintendent and former city council member and mayor in Alaska, I think I have leadership skills and the experience to help make a difference in Portland. And 2024 is a watershed election for us, you know, all 12 seats are open, mayor's open, auditor's open. And I think we need to make sure that we have people in office who can make some common sense and possibly tough decisions. And in my background, I think I have the ability to do that. So in answer to your question, I watched since the charter was approved, how the council is implementing it. And the more I saw, and the more that I saw the costs soar, well above what the Charter Commission had told the council, the voters, the more concerned I came about how the current council was coming up with a very expensive plan and a huge administrative structure to saddle the incoming government with. And let me give you an example.
Okay.
There's a transition team that consists of Michael Jordan, who's the chief administrative officer for the.
Not the famous Michael Jordan.
Yeah, not the, not the basketball guy. Yeah, let's make that clear. And a, and a team of City Hall workers that he put together, and they've been making recommendations to the council.
Okay.
One of the recommendations was this huge administrative structure where not only will there be a city administrator as approved in the charter, but an assistant city administrator. That probably makes sense.
Added that.
But then six deputies.
In that same admin.
Six deputies, each of them will be in charge of a bureau or two, or two or three bureaus, each of which has directors already. And then new offices in City Hall for equity, communications, sustainability, et cetera. And it's almost like they decided the most important thing they can do for the people of Portland is to have bloated bureaucracy and City Hall.
I was just going to ask, do you see all that as bloat or?
Yeah, I do. And it's especially in these times, I mean, how can you spend tens of millions more on City Hall government while the fire department is understaffed, the police department is understaffed? I think if they had asked their voters or their constituents, what do you guys, where would you rather have money spent? I think 90 plus percent would have said, don't do that.
Where is that money coming from? Do you know?
Well, some of it's actually coming from the bureaus themselves.
So they're pulling money out of bureaus to put it into?
I attended a meeting in November to object to the administrative structure. Plus another issue that I'd like to get into, and that gets back to responding to constituents as a council member. They were told by the budget office that 50% of the 13 million in increased costs for the new government, that they were increasing by approving this administrative structure, would be charged to, I believe it was called overhead, which means each of the departments makes a contribution to this centralized City Hall government. And an example that stuck in my head was PBO pays 13% of the overhead. So a bureau that's already struggling to meet its budget, to fill potholes, it'd be nice to fix the streets instead of stuffing City Hall full of bureaucrats, will pay 13% of the increased cost. The police department will pay their percentage, fire bureau, its percentage. It just doesn't make any sense. I understand the theory for doing that. But I don't understand why the council, and I said this to them the other day, doesn't connect the budget dots. If you're spending a lot of money on something over here and you're wrestling with how do we fund in one case Portland Street Response or the larger fire department itself? Well, there's millions right there that could be used for something that people really care about.
Yeah.
The other thing they did, and I think they approved it this week, I was at a council meeting last week. They got a recommendation from the transition team to give these six deputies who are going to be hired on an interim basis for up to a year, six months of severance. Well, nobody in the public sector or private sector gets six months of severance.
And the salary was, what, hundreds of thousands of dollars?
The salaries could be 300 and over 300,000, but the estimate that was given to the council was $209,000 per temporary employee severance, half a year salary plus 50% benefits.
I've never, like, even the most rich social media companies, I only hear of them during like two or three months.
What's typical in corporate America is after a couple of years, somebody gets a week of severance for every year of additional employment. So Portland is setting a new, I would call it a low bar for giving lush, lavish benefits to highly compensated individuals who are taking a job knowing it's temporary.
Yeah.
I talked to somebody whose spouse is in City Hall and she said that for those positions, it just seemed to her that it made sense to do the severance because otherwise they wouldn't find good people. And I think, is it, is it Terry Harris, who was from Baltimore, who knows a fair amount about the charter?
Yes.
He was on Twitter, I think this was on, this may have been on Twitter, and he responded with something like, why do an interim position at all?
Right. Terry Harris.
Let's just not do an interim position then.
Right. Terry Harris knows a lot about the issue he's following.
I'm pretty sure he hasn't been doing long threads.
He was part of the partnership for Common Sense Government. He was on the Baltimore Charter Commission. He offered his assistance to our Charter Commission. They essentially blew him off. They didn't want to hear from anybody who might have experience in, in doing a charter, apparently.
Well, they wouldn't want to be exposed, they wouldn't want anything exposed for what it is.
But you know, as I told the council last week, when I went there to object to this, they can keep positions open, you know, if they have to move somebody. It's only going to be for a few months. I mean, they're talking about hiring in July. There's going to be an election in November, new government in January 1. They're not going to do that much to change and improve city government in a few months.
Right.
So I agree, I agree with what Terry said. Why do this? You know, it's one thing to say, hey, new government, here's a structure we recommend that you consider. Fine. And then move on with doing the business of the current government. And for some reason, they feel the mayor and council and City Hall, some City Hall staff feel they need to dictate to the new government what it should look like. And I think that's wrong.
Yeah, it does seem really problematic, like, because that's what I thought of when you asked that of like, it just seems like it incentivizes people to come in for this golden parachute thing and just dip out and then you have basically a year salary.
Yes, it's a golden parachute.
And that's what I called it. I said this to the council, the golden parachute for all.
And there's no.
I mean, no, as you said. I mean, no, as you said, nobody gets a benefit like that.
Yeah.
Sometimes they engage, you know, when you go testify, they'll sometimes have a discussion with you. Did they talk to you? Did, did anybody on council say anything about this?
The mayor did. And, you know, he started responding. I had gone back to where I was sitting and I went back to the table and we engaged in a discussion and I will say he was very, um, appropriate in, in how he spoke and he listened. We did not agree. The one thing we agreed on, and it gets back to constituent services. At the same time, the transition team is recommending and the council is approving tens of new bureaucrats in city hall. Originally, they recommended two staffers per council member.
Okay.
It has since gone to one. At the same time, they're looking for two offices for each council member, one at city hall and one in a district.
Interesting. I did not hear about that, yeah.
Back in November, when, when I spoke to the council on this issue, they claimed, or the transition team claimed, they had looked at a number of different cities for models. Um, I don't know where they came up with this six deputy and all these new offices model, but I looked at the cities that they looked at, that I understood that they looked at, including San Diego, Sacramento, Seattle. Those, uh, cities have four to nine staffers per council member, depending upon if somebody is the council president or not. One of the cities gives extra staff for that reason. Clearly, the council, the incoming council doesn't need the same number of staff as the current council do. It's six or eight or nine, but their current council is running bureaus and departments. The new council won't. But I can tell you that based on my own experience, there is no way one person can with one staffer, who's going to answer the phone, schedule meetings.
Yeah.
And research every policy issue that's coming across your desk.
Right. And respond to constituents. There's no way one person can do that. And they know that.
It seems, yeah.
The, the, the council knows that, even the transition team.
Of course they know that because they all have their staff doing constituent responses and, you know, many not, but doing constituent responses and, and policy work.
Right. So.
It just seems like everyone I've talked to, including you, so you're saying if, if you all, you know, got elected, you'd have one person to help you?
Well, I think, you know, depending on who gets elected, there'd be additional staff to help council members respond to constituents and maybe a reduced bureaucracy in city hall.
What was Mayor Wheeler's argument for why you, they needed this bloat, if you will?
He thinks it's important. I, I use public safety. I said, you already have a fire chief and a police chief. They could communicate and, you know, talk to, uh, the city administrator, interim administrator. He said, well, that's a really good example of where we need another person in charge of those two people. I, I, I don't agree. But what I did also say to them is it's very interesting to me that we had two media stories just proceeding by testimony to them last week. One said councils or the city is having trouble finding second offices, especially in East Portland.
Yeah.
And the transition team has reduced the number of proposed staff for council members from two to one. I said, so we're going to be renting empty offices because obviously one of them is going to be unstaffed.
You have two people.
The mayor agreed. He said, we're going to leave that decision up to the new council. I almost said, hey, thanks a lot. Why don't you leave all of these decisions up to the new council instead of saddling the new council with an expensive new form of government that the new council may or may not, uh, think is a great idea.
Yeah. Well, I was thinking I, I could see the, you know, the previous kind of team doing that as like a kind of visual Band-Aid, I guess. You know, we had Lisa Schroder on here and she was saying, as a business owner, she's just really worried about that transition. So maybe there's a lot of vocal people who they, they feel like that's a solution to, you know, offering that as a solution. I don't know. It doesn't sound like it really would help that much, but, um.
Yeah. I mean, I think the transition to a new government under the best of circumstances is going to be somewhat messy.
Yeah.
It'll be more messy depending on who gets elected and less messy depending on, uh, who gets elected and what majority, uh, forms to, to move forward. Um, but I don't think having this bureaucratic bloat is going to be helpful.
Yeah.
And, and as I said to the council, it's a slap in the face to the taxpayers. You know, you're underfunding the fire department and police department, but you're overstaffing uh, your own staff, if you will.
Yeah. And all the basic kind of city stuff is, you know.
And you would think, you would think the council would get it. You know, Dan Ragan's running for reelection. Does he think one staffer is adequate for him to perform his duties in a district with a hundred sixty thousand people? The mayor, they're proposing, I think, a couple staffers. Mayor's supposed to be responsible for a budget. There's no budget person in the proposed mayor's office.
Well, and let's say council, for whatever reason, doesn't ratify whoever. My understanding is council has to ratify the city manager.
Right.
And the mayor picks the city manager, council has to ratify. Council doesn't ratify the city manager, the mayor does everything, right?
The mayor stays.
So what if that happens?
It, it could happen.
I think it definitely could.
The new mayor could come in and the new mayor could drag his or her feet in hiring an administrator because they want to be in charge for a while. I mean, that, that theoretically could happen. I'm not, I'm not saying that's anybody's intent.
But yeah, you could see that happening, definitely. Um, yeah, I don't know. The whole thing is just pretty wild.
So anyway, it gets back.
I didn't know about the second office thing. That's like blowing my mind, but it seems like they should flip those of like, have them have more staffers, lose the second office. I don't think there's any sense with that idea, like. I mean, you can walk across the river in twenty minutes.
Yeah. Well, there was, you know, the charter commission talked about that, that, well, they didn't recommend it. They said, hey, maybe there could be two offices in the district so that somebody from, let's say, East Portland didn't have to come downtown.
Yeah. I get the locality kind of idea, but it's just.
We're not that big of a city.
Yeah.
They're making it sound like we're New York or something. That's ridiculous. When Portland is just not that, especially with the urban growth boundary. We're just not that big.
I wonder if they'll change this too, but my understanding is most, all city employees still have this hybrid model to where, I don't know. Maybe that doesn't apply to commissioners or city council, but like if that's the case, they're home two days a week anyway and you could.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Oh, yeah. I mean, remember they couldn't get, I think some commissioners, like Renee Gonzalez, they mandate that those people are in the office every day.
Yeah, I remember he did that.
Yeah, but I, you know, that made news about how they, the city could not bring their employees back to downtown.
The mayor, the mayor basically ordered it.
Yeah.
To happen. And one of his own departments said three hundred people are exempt from what the mayor wants to do for various reasons.
For even the three day.
There was, there was just an article on that, uh, bureau by bureau, and I think something like three hundred of PBO's employees work on a hybrid basis.
Okay. I only brought it up because I was just like, instead of paying for an office, just, you know, they're in your district anyway. Can't you just reach out to them or I don't know.
Or you could say, I'm going to be, I'm going to be at a fire station, you know.
They live near you.
Right.
Or, or something. But, um.
Yeah.
So, you know, at some point, I think city government needs to get real about its finances and how it spends. And, and as I said, this, um, new administrative structure, especially when you add on the severance is an example of wasteful spending. And if you look at my website, bobforportland.com, that's what I use. I have a city hall with dollars flying out of it. And then I have, I believe it was from KGW, they did a story on the new structure with the three hundred thousand deputy city administrators that don't exist now, that the council's approving as an example of wasteful spending that needs to be stopped.
Yeah. I think it's just really getting to this like critical mass kind of point because yeah, all these basic city uh, funding issues are compounding. And then maybe it's just my own soapbox, but PGE is charging people. Somebody did a story on it recently who like, people think PGE is like actually overcharging people for their bills. So I just feel like the average Portland citizen is just feeling like, where's all this money going? And like, what are we? What am I paying for? Like, you know, like.
And I don't think, based on my experience, that many taxpayers mind paying taxes if the money, if they think the money is being well spent.
They can see the results.
But when you have overtaxing, and we have those two examples, the PCF generating hundreds of millions more than what the voters were told. And the same thing with, uh, the preschool tax. I mean, preschool's a great program, but.
I don't know that that's right.
But you need half a billion. Well, I'm not saying it's managed right. I mean, I would.
I don't, I don't know that preschool, see, the thing is, there was this study that just came out. NPR had to report on it, not had to, but they, I, they must have felt that they did because I, they were sort of choking on every sentence as I was reading it, but it was, they, there was this statewide public pre-K program that was taught by licensed teachers housed in public schools and had a measurable and statistically significant negative effect on the children. And then they concluded the study by saying, we might actually get better results from just letting kids play. And it was one of the most scientific studies about preschool. You could, I mean, NPR said it lasted more than a decade. It's the closest thing you can get to real world randomized control trial, the gold standard showing causality in science. And it blew me away because I, I just took it as axiomatic that preschool is good for kids.
Right. Well, you know, we have Head Start, the state has a preschool program. We have the county that is.
Well, that state program has been spectacularly mismanaged. I mean, they spent twenty six million dollars from twenty twenty to twenty twenty two on preschool slots that were never filled.
Right. And, and same thing with the county. They've projected all these slots. They're not being filled. And meanwhile, whether or not you think preschool's a good thing to have, what I know is not a good thing to have is almost half a billion dollars in a fund balance for a program that's serving a thousand kids.
And I say, I was saying that critical mass thing because I.
Seven hundred kids, okay.
Two hundred sixty seven thousand dollars per kid.
Wow. Yeah. Cause I was, I was just thinking, I think it compounds in people's minds because the county has the same issue, right? Like they have a cert, they have this funds that they don't spend as far as homelessness.
Right. Well, there's that issue too, you know, generating money. And on the one hand, I don't believe in spending money just because it exists.
Right.
On the other hand, if there's a need, why isn't the tax money being used in an effective and coordinated manner? And that's one of the big issues, you know, obviously the coordination, uh, between the city and county.
Oh, God.
Yeah.
I wouldn't even say improvement. It needs to exist. It's, it's terrible.
The best example was when John DiLorenzo, who did the Americans with Disabilities Act lawsuit on behalf of the disabled people declared tents from the sidewalks to make it eighty, them ADA compliant, said, we are paying the county to hand out tents, which we are. And they're not keeping track of who they're giving them to. They're just willy nilly handing out all these tents constantly. And he said, we pay the city to sweep them away. Like, what are we doing here?
It's just money, money, more money. Yeah.
It's, yeah.
But hopefully, yeah, I don't know. How do you feel about that with the new, uh, this new council and the county?
That's a great question. What would you do to improve those communications if you win?
Well, one, before, uh, before the election, and you know, I, I hope to win and I'm going to work hard to win. I would hope that people support good candidates for the county as well as the city.
Cause there is a county, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and there's candidates like Vadim Mazursky running, Jesse Burke running, who I think, uh, would make a difference. What I would do is the following. When I was in Alaska, we had the city, we had the borough, the Ketchikan Gateway Borough. It's like a county, but they're not contiguous in Alaska like they are in, in other states. So we would have joint meetings at least once a year or so, city council and borough assembly. There was an agenda that both governments approved on issues that we were trying to work together on. Uh, in the interim, there was a committee, if you will, two mayors, the two managers and one or two council members, assembly members who met to do the same and then take back to their respective bodies. Hey, we had a meeting on X issue. Here's what the committee recommends. And sometimes both bodies would go along with it. Sometimes one or both would not go along with it. But the point being, there was communication and an effort to communicate and coordinate, uh, on issues that.
Yeah. It's on a regular basis.
Yeah. So I think that something like that might work, you know, to the best of my knowledge.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not happening now.
Yeah, I was just curious. I know you'd be in the city, but yeah, it definitely seems like a frayed line of communication between the two.
Well, there's even this thing with ambulances now.
Right, yeah.
Clearly, the ambulance system isn't working. We know it's overloaded with, especially with a lot of ODs now. So that people with other medical issues, uh, have long waits. But apparently the county's contractors having trouble hiring enough, um, paramedics.
Yeah.
So.
I'm curious, do you support that? Like what Renee is asking for?
I, I think it certainly, yeah, it makes sense. It's worth it. I'd rather have an ambulance show up with a paramedic and an EMT than no ambulance at all. And, you know, typically.
I think it models a national standard, what he proposed.
Yeah. And as far as I know, every, most counties around Multnomah do that. The one and one and one.
Yeah. And we already have the Portland Fire Department responding to incidents inside the city and then waiting for an ambulance to come and move people. And.
Yeah. I feel like they're gonna make some kind of change in the coming weeks because, uh, somebody did that, uh, some, I think maybe it was Renee's press release, but somebody did that whole thing of like, this is, oh no, it was AMR themselves. They said, this is going to explode in the next few months if you don't change something because we just don't have the staff to do this and, um.
Well, and then you need three votes at the county to make a change. And I'm not sure from what I read, that exists right now.
But the, the other county, this past week or two, put out their plan, which did not include the changing from the two paramedic thing. So, but I feel like it's gonna.
No, she wants Vega Peterson, the chair of the county, she wants to study it some more and have more conversations. And Commissioner Rubio at the city is saying that she supports this, um, and that she wants to keep having dialogue. And it's just like.
There's no.
Well.
What?
Yeah. What was interesting, apparently she left the meeting before they voted on, I guess Renee Gonzalez had a resolution urging the county to move or at least try a different approach. Um, she left the meeting before they got to that for some reason, and then later criticized his approach.
Yeah, called it, um, like a threat or called it some sort of way to, to push things through. Um, a threat via council, via council resolution is what she called it and said, instead, we need to have dialogue and internal conversations. And like you said, Bob, well, where was she when that came up?
Right.
It's, to me, it comes down to this whole thing. Like some people hear the word urgency and they think that that's like BS, but it's like, the ambulance issue is a real urgent issue, you know?
It's, it's a real issue and.
You know, Sharon Myron on the county, as you know, is an ER doctor. And she's in agreement, when I went and testified on this issue, this was long ago. I think this was last summer. She was raising the, you know, pun intended, I suppose alarm about this stuff and way, way back then. And she was in agreement that, look, if you have a heart attack, I mean, I, I had, I said something like, I told my kids, do not call an ambulance, call a neighbor and have them drive me. We're not, we cannot wait for an ambulance. Um, and she was in agreement with that. We, if we can't rely on our ambulance system to transport constituents, the idea that we're just going to have more meetings and discussions about this is crazy to me.
Or studies. I mean, it's clear that there's, that there's a different way of staffing an ambulance. Why not try it?
Yeah. And you're right. Like there's no, you know, doing a study itself takes like years, so.
The ER doctor has an idea. Let's implement it.
Or that it's put on the shelf. Yeah. I mean, yeah, I, I, I really don't get it. And, you know, based on my own experiences, not that I've ever been in an ambulance being transported, but dealing with that at budget time, every minute makes a difference.
Yes. Of course it does. Same with fire. And, and we've got them understaffed.
Right.
And they're saying, I mean, they, you know, when the, the union came on my podcast Rational in Portland, the Isaac McLennan was saying every, like you said, Bob, every minute counts and after a certain threshold, which they had already exceeded. Um, it, it was, you're in the death zone, really. It's obviously the same thing with the ambulance.
Right. I mean, the fire bureau had a study done in twenty twenty two that recommended, I think, six new stations in Portland due to demographic shifts and or population. Due to demographic shifts and or population growth. In order to give everybody the same four minute response time. That was their goal. If there's an incident, whether it's fire or medical, four minutes, somebody's at your doorstep.
And I think maybe people don't realize or maybe they do, but yeah, fire, a lot of the time, yeah, it's it's not a fire they're responding to. It's a medical thing or some, you know, there's other things that they.
I think the preponderance of fire department calls are actually medical in nature because.
So many overdoses.
Fire codes and and everything, there's there's still fires and serious ones, but in terms of the responses, overwhelm.
And a lot of tents on fire.
Right.
A lot of tents.
What do you call a wellness check or something like that? It's kind of what they're doing, but.
So so anyway, I certainly support staffing the fire department in this case. So that every citizen in Portland has the same low response time. And I think I mentioned this to you that when I was mayor of Ketchikan. Fire Department Fire Chief during budget time asked for some additional firefighter E M Ts for our satellite station. And the council sort of balked at it. Well, I lived just off of downtown near the main fire station. So I said, hey, chief, what's the response time to my house? He said, two minutes. So I said to the council, don't you think everybody should have the same response time as the mayor? Because he had already said we could make it a two minute response time to the neighborhoods that were near that. So they they approved it. So um but the serious part of that is, as we've already discussed, every minute makes a difference in terms of saving a life. And we need to do the best that we can. We need to focus our budget on making sure that public safety is prioritized. Not some of the other things that we spend money on. I mean, if you ask me, should we spend money, you know, three, four million on bureaucratic bloat? Or police and fire, it's no contest.
No brainer, yeah.
Yeah, it's it's a total no no brainer.
Yeah, Bob, if you win for city council, is there anything that you're going to do to reform that structure of council? Or any resolutions that you can counsel? I mean, I don't see why they couldn't. Can council change the form of government? Could you float something to change single transferable vote, for example?
Well, I number one, I think a new council, if you get a majority of seven or hopefully nine or more, could make some changes. It could come up with a new structure, a more streamlined bureaucratic structure at City Hall and use those dollars elsewhere. And then I think it's important, you know, on the one hand, the voters voted for this charter and.
Do you think they knew what they were voting for?
I think many, and I've been told by many, they wanted to change the system. I I think many people.
Anything.
Yeah, I don't. I think many people did not necessarily know the details of the voting.
That's me included, particular, because everyone was just like, I want something new.
So you did you vote for it?
I'm pretty sure I did.
Did you really? Okay.
Because this was what, three years ago or something?
Twenty twenty two.
Twenty twenty two.
So I mean, I.
No, I I take that back. I don't think I did, actually.
I didn't vote for it, but I knew the details um and supported an alternative plan. But um I think what we need to do is do our best to implement the charter. That's what the voters voted for. And at the same time, look at how the vote goes. And I don't mean who wins, but was there a lot of confusion? What the what does the public say about that form of voting?
Well, and that will, I mean, doesn't that segue into your constituent services background? Where you're going to listen, my guess is to what your constituents have to say. And if you're getting a lot of feedback about what is this single transferable vote nonsense? Or anything else that they're complaining about.
To see what the reaction is to that. But I can say that there's a couple of things where they to be um floated. I would tend to support. One would be to give the mayor a veto. The public comment that the Charter Commission itself got but suppressed was that the public. In response to the final draft that the Charter Commission issued and solicited public comment overwhelmingly wanted two things. The mayor to have a veto as a check and balance on unbridled council power, which is very common in especially big cities. I even had veto power in a small city. And number two, uh the public overwhelmingly wanted votes on separate key issues. Not like the manager, the the district, the form of voting.
Separate separated out.
Not a package. And I think the Charter Commission knew that some of those might pass and some uh might fail. And they wanted especially their election system and the multi member districts. That was really what they were after as in order to increase political power for some people in in Portland. But I mean, that's.
Yeah, it's a the mayor thing's a good point because I heard in my understanding, like, you know, we kind of, the mayor currently is kind of a weak mayor in the sense that they don't have a lot of power. And then this new form, they have even less. Does that sound?
Yeah, the mayor, I mean, the mayor will submit a budget, can submit policy.
The mayor will appoint the city manager. That's I think that's something. And then I think the mayor, as long as the mayor has a great relationship with the city manager, which you think that they would. Because they serve at the mayor's pleasure, right? Um the mayor can potentially influence a fair amount of what's going on with all those bureaus.
Right. I mean, the mayor will be essentially the C E O with the assistance, it's supposed to be with the assistance of an administrator. What the structures do, it's really putting the administrator, like everybody, including the council, is going to work for the city administrator. Which is uh not what uh an appropriate form of government should be.
Yeah, so the mayor will kind of run the all the bureaus.
Right.
And then the council can change those, but the mayor has no veto power on.
The mayor can only break a tie.
Break a tie, okay.
So the mayor at a council meeting, I don't want to say will be a potted plant, but essentially the the council will have a council president. The council president will preside over council meetings, not the mayor any longer.
Wow, okay. Um, yeah, I'm still learning about all this stuff. I'm sure a lot of Portlanders are too, but.
So, yeah, I mean, I think people wanted a change in government and uh and there were some good parts in the charter. Having an administrator moving to districts, it was just the multi member districts and the method of voting. That the Charter Commission had an objective. Uh three Charter Commission members disagreed with the final version. Vadim Mazursky in particular was quoted as saying it was preordained. And it was, I mean, there's documents that preexisted. The formation of the Charter Commission that dealt with the form of voting that we ended up with. It wasn't an accident that we got the single transferable vote.
Part of the goal, kind of, yeah.
I I right, I think from the outset.
Is it your understanding, Bob, as part of that former. Uh Partnership for Common Sense Government group that was lobbying for no on charter? Is it your understanding that one of the reasons, I mean, I think there's probably a number of reasons, like you said, Andy, I think, and Bob. I think a lot of people just wanted something different and they voted for anything different. There was a good trigger finger there. Um but also is it your understanding that there just was not enough time to educate people about what this proposal was? Because the they had been working on this, is my understanding, before that commission was officially formed, they had been working.
Right.
So they had all this lead up time. And then all of a sudden, people like Vadim Mazursky, Alyssa Pishka are learning about what the plan is.
Right.
And sort of shrinking back in horror and and going, well, wait a minute here. And it's just being pushed on forward while Vadim is being accused of racism by one of the commission members, at least one. And there were articles about that in Willamette Week. And I, you know, eventually he resigns. But then these no on charter groups are are formed. And Ulysses Pack comes up with its Mingus Maps's Political Action Committee comes up with its form of government that it thinks makes sense. But that's all in response, right? That's all far later after we start learning about what what's going on here.
Right. They had outside groups contributing large sums of money to ultimately to the to the yes campaign and those proposing it. What's worse is the city itself, in my opinion, spent money promoting a yes vote. And I went to a council meeting, the one.
It seems like illegal.
In November. Oh, it is. It is illegal. They sent out a flyer, which I had and brought to the November meeting. And it's something I complained about because it talked about the point nine to five point million a year. Uh annual operating cost increases. It left off the twelve to seventeen million in transition costs. We're already well above that anyway. So I.
All the matching.
So I I filed a complaint with the city.
Yeah.
In fact, with Michael Jordan himself, and he ended up blowing me off. I I said, I would like to have your city website, which mirrored that lack of information, include those costs. His response was the Secretary of State's office already had approved the ad. Well, I had already talked to the Secretary of State's office. They don't know, for example, if a bond issue is going to raise taxes four million or seven million. If the city says four, they just look at the what the city's saying and say, yeah, that's objective. It's but they don't know what the the facts are. So they had no idea that the city deliberately left off twelve to seventeen million in costs.
Yeah.
That perhaps if the voters knew that, uh you know, so some additional ones.
Bob, this is really worrisome. Are you are you saying the Secretary of State never amended that position on the city's. Advertising and lobbying for Charter Commission based on false numbers?
They don't, they look at how the city's presenting the information, but they don't know if the city is.
Right.
It's kind of an honor system.
Yeah, they don't have analysts looking at what the real numbers are.
Verify it. They're not fact checking.
But at that point, it was, in my opinion, incumbent upon the city to have to have added that. And not essentially, if you looked at the piece of literature, even though it didn't say vote yes, everybody who looked at it. Viewed it as a pro yes on the charter piece of propaganda at taxpayer expense. And I think the city staff who did it do that. And um, you know, I was just surprised that. The decision in response to my complaint was that that's a good point. We'll add the information. We want to make sure the voters are fully informed.
So you're saying, Bob, that it's not incumbent on the Secretary of State to change their position and say, well, hey, wait a minute, city. I'm getting different data here. You need to take another look at this.
They don't even feel obligated to look at it.
I know that, but don't they're not even obligated to consider your.
I I don't know exactly how how they they look at that. But again, my complaint was directed at the city at that point.
Of course.
And it it should have been fixed, but but it wasn't. So but keep in mind that even even with. Millions being spent to uh or a million or more being spent to on the yes campaign. Forty two percent of the public voted against it, passed fifty eight forty two. So that's a pretty large minority, granted. The the other thing that happened that a lot of people don't know is Charter Commission hired a person who had worked for a nonprofit. And then the Portland City Club, City Club had a study done and.
Right.
Basically, the Charter Commission adopted the results of that and the effort of a of another group. The city Charter Commission hired a community engagement contractor. Happened to have been the former employer of the staffer, if you will. So they got a two hundred, later amended to three hundred thousand dollar contract.
God.
And they turned around, not their political arm, you know, different nonprofits have different statuses.
C four.
So their political arm turned around and gave two hundred thousand to the yes campaign. So there was.
Wasn't that amazing how there were? And I don't, I mean, we talked about this on Andy's show before, but I just think it's amazing how many nonprofits. And I don't know how many of their C four arms were doing this. I know at least some of them. I don't, I don't know how many exactly they were keeping with corporate formalities on things like that. But it was just amazing to me how many nonprofits came out and support, like the food bank. Why does the food bank support charter reform?
Right, yeah, they.
That blew me away.
They contributed thirteen thousand to the yes campaign. And, you know, I saw in different social media, people were stopping their contributions. They didn't know what was going, that it was going to political purposes. But in any case, it did pass. And we have what we have. And we just need to see uh how the voters respond. And then what changes might happen. You know, we talked about my Earl veto. If a new council wants to ask the voters, do you want the mayor to have a veto? You know, that sounds like a good idea. One of the other flaws in the uh charter is there's a salary commission to set salary for the council. Not all bad in the sense you don't want the council necessarily to set their own salary, but there's no check and balance there either. They could have recommended a half million dollar salary for council members, and that's what the salary would be. So if if I was going to look at, are we going to ask the voters at some point, are there, if there's some flaws that. Uh we see and that the public sees as the the new government takes shape and form. That would be something that I think the public should be asked. Would you like, would you like to have the council have the ability to reject salary increases? There's a salary commission in the state of Alaska for legislators and members of the executive branch. They can make a recommendation. The legislature can reject it.
Yeah, those are, yeah, good, good examples.
So, you know, it may be minor in the great scheme of things, but for some reason, you know, in terms of the veto, in terms of setting council salaries. There's no check and balance whatsoever.
No, those sound both like really good examples to me, you know.
Bob, are you thinking that maybe if you win, you might float the idea of commissioning a poll like D H M or something to. Poll the public about all these issues?
I hadn't thought of that, but I wouldn't be surprised if somebody in the private sector does a poll. The D A D H M seems to have a regular release of polling information. And I suspect one of the polls post election will be asking questions.
Yeah, it seemed smart to do that. Um, can I go through a quick, a couple of little lightning round questions here as we wrap it up? I'm curious, one ten, this is, are you repeal repair kind of guy? I know that that's not something you necessarily have control over, but.
Right, I I support amending measure one ten. There's a group called Fix Measure One Ten Ballot or or something like that. Um and and I support what what they're doing. I think there needs to be uh an effort to stop. Public use of hard drugs. Um I attended two jazz performances in the last week. And when you walk up Salmon Street from Broadway, there's crowds of drug addicts. There's plumes of smoke. There's people with torches and other devices. And you know, nothing currently really can be done about that. I think something does need to be done about that. I mean, I've walked in Northwest where I live with my granddaughter, past needles, past addicts. So I've had to cross the street so she's not exposed to fentanyl smoke. So, yeah, clearly, something needs to be done. And I I I think the effort that I understand is to. Try to reclassify hard drugs as class A felonies. I don't know what the legislature is going to do.
I know, yeah, I brought it up because I believe it's still in the Oregon legislature right now.
To get people into treatment, the treatment that was promised by the outside groups who funded measure one ten.
The drug policy.
Decriminalize, but we're going to have treatment. Well, maybe they should have waited until treatment actually existed. And then done something with criminalization.
Yeah, yeah. And we beat this drum the whole time. But yeah, if you've ever seen anything from the Drug Policy Alliance, they kind of crafted one ten. They gave that to us in Portland, so. They're doing a lot of, they're pushing a lot of ads right now, so just keep that in mind.
Oh, yeah, yeah. They're pushing ad after ad after that. And, you know, Portland is sort of a petri dish for the United States. You know, why didn't uh Drug Policy Alliance is based in New York? Why not try this in Manhattan?
Because they're not dumb enough to fall for it.
In their own neighborhood or the unusual form of voting we have. Why was that pushed by outside groups? But uh into line and sinker by the Charter Commission uh when it's not commonly used here.
Yeah.
Anywhere in the United States.
Unfortunately, yeah, now we have this track record of like, well, we keep trying this stuff, so they're gonna keep.
Experiment some cockamamie idea here, some crazy far left idea. Please try it out because we'll vote it in.
Yeah, the money is effective, you know, they'll.
But I, but I think people have um. Learned by the mistakes that have been made.
I think so too.
And just, you know, there was the the vote uh recently to have um a capital gains tax.
Yeah.
Overwhelmingly rejected.
Didn't pass, yeah.
So, you know, I think people understand, number one, we're taxed enough. Portland has the highest, second highest tax rate, state and local, after New York City.
That's right.
New York kicks in at an income of twenty five million. Ours kicks in at a hundred and twenty five thousand.
Wow.
And.
That's right.
And if the county raises the rate like they're proposing by point eight percent, so they're gonna go from one point five to point eight percent. That's a fifty three percent increase in that particular tax will exceed New York, will be the highest taxed jurisdiction.
In the entire country, in the United States.
And then we wonder, well, why are people moving to another county or across the river?
Yeah.
Or something.
Low tax states.
And we need to reverse that. And and the way we reverse it is holding the line on taxing and making sure we are spending our money wisely. And that's why a central theme in my campaign is exactly that, fiscal responsibility.
Mm hmm. Yeah, and it sounds great. Um, I was gonna ask you, this is also kind of maybe a weird question. Do you have a favorite Portland mayor of all time? I know Bud Clark is kind of a lot of people or Vera.
I would say sort of Bud Clark. Now, keep in mind, I have lived here since two thousand eighteen, but I met since that time a number of staffers who worked for Bud Clark. And they all admired him. When you checked up Steve Boskowitz, I've I've met his daughter Rachel a few times. Um, you know, she's considering a run for city council.
Oh, wow.
And I certainly before, you know, over the years, I saw friends of mine had the poster, you know, expose yourself to art. So, um, yeah, so I I don't know if I would say he's my favorite, but.
He's probably the most well known.
He certainly stands out as a common sense kind of leader that hopefully will get a number of.
Yeah, I was just curious. Do you have a favorite mayor of all time?
I I mean, I like Vera. I like, I think you're right, Bob. Most people seem to, who who knew Bud Clark directly and worked for him, seemed to really admire him. And he seems like that was a good period in Portland history that people remember fondly.
I just think of the word practicality pops in my mind when I think of him, but I don't know. I was, I, you know, I didn't know him either. I moved here in two thousand six, so I think Tom Potter was the mayor when I moved here, but, yeah. Um, I'm not saying anything about him, but.
No.
Um, all right, I just have some quick, kind of goofy questions I always end with, and I added another one, so.
Okay.
Um.
Here they come.
When you park, do you pull into a spot, let's say it's a regular parking spot, you pull in or do you back in?
I usually will back in if you talk about parallel parking.
Or like a just regular straight line thing?
If there's five spaces, I'll pull in.
Okay.
But if if there's one or two spaces, I'll definitely back in.
Okay. I know, she's already answered that, so.
What do you do?
I back in.
Okay.
It's just, I just find it efficient.
I I have only recently started back in in the past few months. I don't know why.
I was persuasive on that, I bet.
Yeah, I don't know. Um.
Don't you think it's more efficient, though?
Cause I like it when I leave.
Yes, when you come out and you've gotta be somewhere, you wanna just drive straight ahead. You don't wanna deal with.
Yeah, and actually, my last car, which was a muscle car Dodge Challenger I used to have, but um I got, like, it was the only first car I ever got from a dealership. It was a used Dodge Challenger. And two weeks after, I got somebody backed into it, cause they were pulling out of a spot, not backing in, but they were parked normally and put it, anyway.
Hmm.
Um, it was fine. I, it was covered by insurance luckily, so, um, all right. The peanut butter question, are you crunchy or smooth peanut butter?
Crunchy.
All right, you knew, you had that loaded. You had that ready to go. What about stir no stir? Do you like the oil in there?
I'm not a no stir person, yeah.
Not a no stir.
Give me the oil. Make make me stir.
Oh, okay, you're pro stir.
Pro stir, yeah.
How do you deal with the spillage over the side of the container?
I'm very careful. And if it spills as it does, especially at the beginning, I'll wipe it off. But, yeah, I, what I also do is I stir it really well and then I refrigerate it.
Right, right, yeah.
So, you know.
Sounds like Leslie Beanon.
Yeah, this is the advice that I've got.
So then the oil doesn't keep rising.
Well, my whole thing is like, I've always understood that that kind tastes better. I just don't wanna do the stirring. It grosses me out and I'm sorry to pro pro stir people. Um, all right, I have one last one. This is a new one. Let's say you're getting ice cream from, uh, what's the place?
Salt and Straw.
Salt and Straw, uh, or anywhere.
Cold City.
Do you go cone, waffle cone, or a cup?
That's a good question.
Cone or waffle cone? I would take a regular cone.
Regular cone, okay.
A regular cone, yeah. Sometimes a cup.
Yeah, I'm kind of more a cup person as I get older.
I wouldn't describe myself as a waffle cone, but if you ask me if I liked waffles over pancakes, I might say, yeah, give me a waffle.
I agree with that. I like waffles, yeah. What about you? What is ice cream?
I'm a glutton. I do a waffle cone.
It's the best cone, right?
It's so freaking good and it smells so good.
Before you even get in. Um, cool. Was there anything else you wanna bring up? Is there anything bugging you that you wanna talk about?
No, I don't think so. Any other questions that you might have or?
It was good to talk to you. Thank you for running.
Yeah, and thanks, like I said, all the candidates. I just really appreciate your time. Um, not everyone is willing to do these long conversations, so.
Well, I think it's important, and whether people wanna vote for me or someone else, I hope that your listeners and and others educate themselves about the importance of the twenty twenty four election.
Yeah.
And look for candidates who they think will do a good job representing them.
Yeah.
I guess I have, I do have one more question, which is, Bob, it's my understanding, and and I don't, I'm still learning about ranked choice. And of course, I I think we're all learning about single transferable vote and we'll learn in the days to come how that's gonna look. Um, maybe, hopefully, we learn about it. But the question is, do we, I think everybody, people are gonna be tempted to just sort of rank everybody that's listed. Should you rank someone that you do not wanna see, do not wanna see on city council?
Um, I don't think I would, because there's the potential that that person will get a vote from you. Um, if you were ranking all the candidates from A to Z or one to thirty, whoever you're gonna have on your ballot, that that's one thing. But when you're ranking no more than six, um, you know, right now, I would say rank the candidate or candidates that you would like to see in office. Keeping in mind that the less rankings that you do,
Yeah.
the greater the chance is ultimately that none of your rankings will uh win and you're, or will go to a winning candidate, and so your vote is not tallied. It's called exhausted ballots. It's a feature in ranked choice. It's made worse by single transferable voting where um people vote for candidates. Their, none of the candidates they rank actually win, so the the vote's not counted.
Okay.
And that's one of the reasons we supported a a single member district, because it'd be a a couple candidates. And if you voted for one or the other, you're, whether win or lose, your vote's actually tallied.
Yeah, um, I was gonna say too, if you like what you hear from Bob, go to his website and donate. Are they still doing the match right now or?
There's a a match. Um, and my website is bobforportland.com. And certainly if people wanna go there and especially look at uh what I say about the issues that I think are are of great importance to Portland, issues that I think the city has failed to deliver on, public safety, homelessness, transportation, and certainly sensible spending and and taxation. Uh, you'll see uh what what I think. The city has a matching program. It matches the first twenty dollars from any Portland resident. They don't have to be in District Four. They could be in Districts one through four on a nine to one basis. So if somebody gives me twenty dollars or more, the first twenties match, the city gives a hundred eighty dollars with an asterisk. The asterisk is, for some reason, at the time the Charter Commission was doing cost estimates, some basic math was not done. The basic math, or I even call it arithmetic, you know, like first or second grade arithmetic, where typically you have a mayor maybe or an auditor and one or two council members run. Well, if you're going to have fourteen seats open, mayor, auditor, and twelve council members, where we already have fifty six people running for council, the cost of a match is going to be substantially more than under the current system.
And it's a nine times matching.
A nine times match. So based on the appropriation that was given, which was essentially the same, uh, the matching program is five to seven million dollars short and probably getting shorter every day. It's more candidates enter. The Election Commission prorated the mayor. The the mayor under the matching program could have received up to seven hundred and fifty thousand tops. Now that's been reduced to a hundred thousand with the thought being, well, mayors can raise outside money. They don't need the match as much. I don't know if that's true, but that was the theory. And council match has been reduced by sixty percent. So council members currently will get forty percent of what the match would have been.
Hmm, okay.
Unless the council increases the budget and fully funds it, as I think they should. It's a promise made to the voters. Um, if so, if the council doesn't like the program, they can amend it or or do something. But um, you know, again, looking at how they're spending money, bloated bureaucracy or fully funding elections, I I think if you ask voters which they prefer, they'd say fully fund elections or give the money to public safety. Uh, some voters may not like the match. I I certainly have met some who don't think the city should be matching at all.
I think they should. I just think nine is exceedingly high.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, the intent was to try to level the playing field, so.
Yeah, it's.
People who.
I get the merit.
Come from any.
I do too.
Any background. Uh, but it it should be fully funded, in in my opinion.
And I do wanna, I'll I'll donate to you. I've been donating to anyone who comes on here, but.
Oh, wow. Well, thank you.
Yeah, I do wanna, I can't remember if it was Eli or some, one of them, I accidentally did twenty five and I overshot the uh the match.
Okay, you can do, feel free to do that with me, but as I said, it's twenty or more, but only the first twenty is matched.
Only, okay, so it still counts.
You can give more. In fact, you can, there's a three hundred and fifty dollar limit. I'm not asking you to do that, just to, just to be clear.
Yeah.
But if somebody does a twenty five or a fifty or a hundred, it's only the first twenty that's matched.
I got you.
And I've also been telling people, because I've had some people with spouses or partners who've wanted to donate to me. And I've said, the best thing is decide what you wanna donate and divide it in half so that each of you does uh a donation.
And then the match.
Of twenty more. That way I get two matches, not just one, if they.
Yeah, it should be per adult in your household. So if you have a college student, for example, that is at all inclined towards a particular candidate, that also counts as somebody who can qualify.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and check Bob out on socials and stuff. Is it just all Bob for Portland, is it?
Um, it's, yeah, it's Bob for Portland. Uh, my website is Bob for Portland, F O R.
F O R.
My social media is with the number four.
Okay, yeah, I love that everyone's distinguished, because it's confusing. And everyone has, everyone has a four in there, so, yeah, it's good to know. And thanks, Kristen. Go check out her show, Rational Portland.
Thanks, Andy.
Yeah, thanks, everybody.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you. Good to see you both.
Yeah, it was a good convo.